I'm sorry.
Do what?
Sorry, you hit such a busy schedule.
Richard is missing on his first round of the table.
Called the June eleventh, twenty twenty five, rego planning commission meeting order. First item of business is approval of minutes from May eighth that you have in front of us.
I believe we have three to make the may eighth.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from May. Any further discussions? Hearing and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Uh, table rezoning request from A one to M U B two on Butler Road uh from Portia Development and B U C Development. We've talked about this for the last two meetings and I believe we have got clarification that the should the commission decide to amend that to M U B one, we can make that uh make that amendment to change the zoning classification. There anyone in here that has comments about this particular development that has not already spoken about it? Alright.
I'll make a motion that we amend the rezone A one from an M B, M U B two on Butler Road to an M U B one for Protea Development, B U C Development LLC.
Second.
Okay, have a motion, a second to amend the request from A one to M U B two. Oh, I'm sorry, to M U B one, but rather than one, rather than two, I'll get it spit out correctly. Any further discussions? Hearing and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay.
You only need a second, but it actually goes on.
Right.
So then now we need to make a motion to approve to.
Recommend to reason, yeah.
Make a motion, we uh approve the rezone from A one to M U B one uh on Butler Road for Protea Development, B U C Development LLC.
Okay.
Have a motion and a second to recommend the rezone request to the city council. Any further discussion? Hearing and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, we'll go to planning or to the city council Monday.
I'll be back next month if you want.
I'll meet you.
Item three, large scale development plan for tractor supply at Heritage Parkway and Mock Street by Corolla Capital and S H three.
I think we have several representatives in the back. If you want to just raise your hand, um Chuck Wiley on the floor, do you have any comments about?
Those are working through their drainage port or anything else that's in there.
So the drainage port is not approved yet.
No, it's been submitted and waiting for comments from the consulting engine.
Everything else we've looked at, I think is okay. They need minimal parts on all their parking. In fact, they have seen that a little bit. Utilities are available at locations. It says show them. What one, J C, did you look at the fire?
I looked at the fire. Fire is good.
I'm only asking as a dominant, do they have any sign thing issued that might come up? Cause the dominant sign came up to us.
Uh, probably a standard sign will be you won't have anything flashing or.
No, no, there are big standing tracks flying down. They'll need whatever the code is, the sign didn't reach out.
Difficult to watch your government of the locations.
Do you need anything contingent?
Uh, only the contingent upon the drainage port, you know, for a lot of the other.
Anyone in the audience have any comment about this project? Yes, sir. If you don't.
What's the size of this store? Very one frame.
Gentlemen, can you answer that question?
I don't know the size of Farmington, but this is the uh new prototype twenty one nine thirty. The fence outdoor display is just a shade under twenty dollars per day. I I I don't know. I did not know Farmington. I may have been there long.
But the sales floor is fifteen thousand square foot and then between the stock and feed areas and the outdoor areas uh twenty thousand under roof and then there's another addition, seven thousand four foot in fence in.
Anyone else?
All right, I make a motion, we approve the large scale development plan for tractor supply at Heritage Parkway on Mock Street. Uh, Corolla Capital and S E three contingent on the drainage report.
Second. Have a motion, a second to approve large scale plan for truck supply. Any further discussion? Hearing and all those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Okay. Uh, concept plan for residential development on Stonewall Road by Lemons Engineering Consultants.
Mr. Lemons.
Well, technology is wonderful. Y'all have it up on the screen, but I got some paper conference if you would like one of those as well. Uh, my name is Tim Lemons with Lemons Engineering and I represent the developers for this property. This is a hundred and fifty nine plus acres located on Stonewall. It is uh approximately a quarter of a mile outside the city limits. But uh we of course do plan to add access property into the city with the development. It is a people family attached home style development on the uh on the uh east uh three fourths of the property. The little piece that wraps across the top and around the west side, we're reserving that uh for a potential uh either duplex or triplex or townhouse kind of development. That's yet to be decided.
Where is that?
That would be just on that very last little dog leg right there.
Here.
Yes, sir. But everything from where that becomes a big piece all the way back to the east, that would obviously have been the detached homes.
And just I'm gonna try to cover this really quick, just for some clarification on this. This is probably the as complicated as it gets because uh right now that is in the Fergo planning jurisdiction, uh one mile out. Uh, so you've submitted your concept plan at the city Fergo. Our jurisdiction by state statute ends August fifth because the state legislature just passed an act that took that away. So August fifth, we no longer have jurisdiction on this. Now with that saying, if you want city utilities, you're probably still gonna have to play with us, so.
Most definitely is read that. That's what we're out.
Probably gonna have to annex. So the annexation process can take some time. So I would recommend that if that's something you're interested in, that you would get started on that particular day.
And just, just so you'll know, um on the territorial jurisdiction deal that's being lifted, um I used to be in the House of Representatives and I was chairman of city county local and uh like it or not, I was a strong advocate for the extraterritorial jurisdiction because it helped cities protect themselves. Unfortunately though, the new regime feels like it's not needed, so.
It used to be five miles, cut, cut to three, then one, now now zero, so.
Yeah, but I I do think it's a great idea because you do not want to inherit a pig and a book, you know. So we are gonna work with the city and put everything into city standards because we want to become a part of the city.
With that said, I mean, basically, do you want to ask questions, planning manager? Are you wanna open up a comment?
No. I have one comment, Larry. When, when I met with the developers, I said that cul-de-sac on that lake there on the park rest was not approved. It needed to be a true street that came back out on Stonewall. And so the concept plan can't.
Well, I think my fire code, J C, thirty, thirty units is all you can have with.
You can only, yeah, no more than thirty units on a, on a one way, one.
Six hundred feet.
My city ordinance.
Yeah, and and that's something that will be more than. We, we will look into that, um, you know, a little bit closer when the time comes. We're, we're gonna be concentrating, I believe, uh, Mr. Memphis Snyder's here tonight. He's one of the developers. I feel like we're gonna be concentrating most of our efforts on the residential, the single family detached for the foreseeable future. That would probably be one of the last phases. Um, bringing a road out to Stonewall at that location, um, it makes me a little nervous because it is in a curve and an incline and kind of a blind spot, but we'll.
It's definitely blind, it's probably drawn many times in that, so.
You mentioned phase. What, I mean, what is your intended phase plan?
Uh, the first phase will be the lots that are along Stonewall, those one acre tracks. And the reason, we, we've done this model of several uh developments in the past. It's worked out very, very well. Just recently, we did one in Gentry. That was about uh two hundred residential lots, uh small lots with the larger one acre lots along the main thoroughfare. We like that because it kind of uh kinda keeps the density down a little bit overall for the project and it just, just makes for a good, a good feel and we like to do that, so. I would say those first lots along Stonewall, we will probably see those in the near, near, near future as soon as we can get it put together. Um, as far as the single family lots behind that, how many are you looking at?
Well, we're looking at about uh sixty lots of phase. And I think the model there is your nine thousand will lot like him.
Yeah.
Definitely about a hundred and fifteen or twenty, something like that. And uh we would start on the east end and do about sixty lots a year as well.
So will you be willing to submit a phasing schedule with preliminary flat?
Yes, sir.
That's, that's what we've done with other big.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That way we can scatter them out over years.
And of course, I guess, I mean, obviously just in the concept side, but I mean, I, I'm confused how you will build along those lots where you're showing that uh electrical transmission line or you end right there, how you, how you would build in those lots without easement?
Yet to be determined, to be honest. I mean, as it is right now, where our thought is that's approximately a hundred foot right away in there. I don't believe there's any revisers within that area, so we would take the first fifty feet of that uh hundred foot easement for, for right away. And then instead of having a twenty five foot front set back, we would have like a fifty foot front set.
Just, yeah, I mean, you'll have to have some conversations with power company. We have a similar subdivision, five, very similar to this size, somewhat, had a similar row of houses with a power line in front. Power company would not let them develop the plant. And that was sweatco. I think this is ours, our selected, so it may be different.
Well, we'll check with them.
They didn't even want them putting driveways under the power line.
Sure.
You don't have any questions before we open up the public?
Chuck, you wanna kinda discuss the infrastructure side of things? Cause I think that's gonna be probably one of the most challenging.
They have to have a new lift station down there on the other side of the uh money port, which is gonna be the west.
Somewhere here?
Yeah, oh, well, it'd be determined with their design.
And that's flood bank, so it would have to be the top, it would have to be above.
And then the water line will have to be upgraded all the way back to industrial. The current line will not support architecture for subdivision.
Back to Dittmar Road.
Do you think a single feed will support fire flow even if you took it all the way back?
We will probably partner with the development to go from the native to a twelve inch. Because they require to build an eight inch and then we will.
You know what the fire flow requirement is on? Is fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred gallons a minute, which is pretty good.
We have sufficient flow and pressure at the industrial park and boiler, so that'll be where they have to connect. That'll take me deep turn.
And the only, the green space you're, you're planning on utilizing easement, is that what your intention is?
Yes, uh, yet to be determined. We're, we believe, we believe that on the far east side, we're gonna have uh detention. We are gonna look at possibly retention to have a little water feature there possibly. Uh, just depends on, you know, what we get into doing. Uh, we're starting to do the topo just about two weeks ago, so we're trying to get that done, but uh, that's gonna be kind of a recreational area, uh maybe a park setting. Uh, well, they're on the far east side.
Okay.
The area between the lots working its way back towards the northwest corner, that's green space. It's power line right away, so I think at very best it might be just a large side yard of those lots. Uh, what, yet to be determined though.
The part there on the east, the, where the blue water feature is, that is where you're talking about, depends on the majority of this flood.
Hmm.
So it'll be, it'll be limited for public space.
And just for everybody's information, I have seen water completely over the fence line up to probably this area, so I have seen all of this area underwater in the past and not just underwater, but underwater. Uh, I think flood drain probably dips into these lots.
It does just a little bit, yes.
So I think there's five or six lots maybe there that might be affected by flood.
And what, what we're planning on doing is, of course, we're gonna have, uh, it's a soldier or.
Summing a minimum.
Uh, where we take up for the detention retention point, we feel like we could use have more than enough dirt to bring those up. But yet to be determined, of course. But that's our, our plan. We would like to get lots out of the flood zone. Fortunately, uh floodway does come up to the very eastern edge of this property, but it does not come across the property land. It's, it's right there close to it.
There have been at least two floods in the last twenty years where the road was not passable. The road was shut down, so it, when it floods, it floods.
Anyone in the audience have any questions or comments concerning this development, this concept? Yes, sir.
Like John Eric, we have the school district and the population growing us, we're dealing with the school district. Regardless, we're trying to make plays for that. As this develops, one thing I can see potentially being an issue that we would have to be thought about is the rallying of traffic and everything. The, the main road will be right there by the middle school. We go back all there. Right now, the way it is, we have all these desperate homes on some of the ground, trying to dig it up.
Yes, it only takes me an extra fifteen minutes every morning to get through there.
We do our best to try to mitigate it. You'll keep killing. I'd say put them on buses, but we don't have one buses either, no.
And that's like three, three mornings a week I drive through that.
Right, I just, what I was asked to represent on the, with school district.
Any other comments? Concerned? I mean, I, I think obviously we, we realize that that area is gonna grow. I think we just gotta be smart and, and phasing it in to where it doesn't stress our schools and everything, I mean, schools, trash, water, streets. So I think the phasing plan is, is definitely what we'll have to look at.
It is definitely more man, we'll lose five hundred.
Yeah.
How many, how many hundreds are still not settled off in there?
Uh, there's projects off of Dittmar and Hudson Heights. Of course, they're getting ready to start the next phase. Do you remember how many to the next phase?
I don't know how many is in it. Fire's settling to the, the first phase.
Yeah, so there's about a hundred new.
Five hundred and ninety nine, I think.
So we're talking about another hundred fifty plus a hundred five hundred on Blue Street and it's just gonna be cram packed on our school that are already busting at the seams. I have a problem with, with saying that we, this is good, just cause you can do it, I mean, you shouldn't do it. And as a planning commission, what, when I, when I started on this, we're doing, I, I think I'm supposed to do it with the whole town. And I don't think this is what's best for the hometown, in my opinion, because we're busting at the seams. And kill, I mean, obviously our motion didn't pass, so we're not getting that school and we're just gonna keep adding and adding. Guys, we're at it. We're already ready. We can't just keep adding that. That's where I'm at.
J C, they're not, I mean, they talked about that multi family being a, a later phase. Or what are you looking at, consider as far as the basis of this project or one of it?
Now, at this point, I don't think they have that, that ready to present. I think you're, you're just saying that that's gonna be the, probably the latter phase of, of the entire project. Is that what you're thinking or?
Yes, so we plan on, because our water is gonna come in from the east, we're gonna start at the east or the way west. So I just, I don't see how we could bypass a bunch of the R one lots to get to the multiple family on the primary, and I just don't see how we would do it.
But all, what I was asking, did all the R one, do you look at that one massive project or is that gonna be a basis? So.
Oh, that would, the R, the R one, I think everything there is subject to phasing. Everything's subject to phasing.
And what we've required on the last one is we require them to go ahead and submit it at preliminary plan for the entire thing. And we've required that they bring back each individual phase again, so that we have a chance to review that individual phase. And, and what we found so far is that every time they've reset it on individual phase, it's changed just a little bit. You know, they've had to tweak it because I do agree that road's gonna be a problem, the one on the west side. That would be a terrible place to bring a road in. It's, it's a blind spot now and you can't see the direction.
But not come off while get on Stonewall Road there.
Yeah, there is an intersection there from the south, so the new street would probably have to line up at that, at that one.
So I think so.
The beautiful thing about the road across the street, uh, you know, consider yourself like a, a driver pulling up there. You don't have to necessarily be a hood owl coming in from the south. We could stonewall because you're, you know, you're looking this angle and that angle, but across the street, you're looking back over your shoulder both directions, so. Would like to avoid putting that in if we could, but you know, again, that's much way down the route.
That's how the table top are quiet today.
They want that emphasis, would that entail that road or not? That is.
That particular east or west road?
Yeah.
I mean, they would have to work it in. I mean, as it stands right now, it would not meet fire code. I mean, it's got too many residences. So I mean, it would have to have a, an exit somewhere. I mean, they're not gonna be able to, they wouldn't be able to build it as presented now. And if they shortened it as for city code and, and lower the amount of lots, I mean, it would be acceptable, but as it stands now. Without, I counted it on the big plans, but it, it far exceeded what was allowed. And I was, I, I wasn't even working on the subdivision side. I was working on fire side.
Yeah, I think the information I sent you all had it broke down, how many multi family there was, but I don't remember that.
Yeah, I just thought, I remember on the, on the digital plan.
That, that information you sent us initially broke it down between single family.
Yes, it did. And unfortunately, I didn't bring that document with me.
Sorry.
I can pull it up on my email.
Well, I mean, it.
It doesn't matter to what I did.
I never like to tell people what to do with the land that they own as long as it fits. And to me, I'm gonna disagree with Blaine because I think it does fit. I mean, I think we know this is the area of expansion. I think the timing is my biggest concern, uh, which can be addressed by phasing schedules. Uh, and then my next concern is the road and how we create that to be a much safer strip right there. And if you think about five hundred fifty new homes, let's just say a hundred and fifty of those are drivers uh during the age of eighteen. And while it may not be a hood owl situation for the older, more mature driver thinking of a sixteen year old, I mean, I'm thinking of mine uh pulling out there. That is within our reason to say if that's a good spot or not, but I do think like I said, I never like to say no or what you're doing. And I think with proper scheduling, we could maybe, I feel like something could be worked out if we can figure out.
And there, there are options for trucks. I mean, they can turn on industrial, you know, that, I don't know if it's psychological or what, the people feel like that takes them out of the way at their age.
Right.
Uh, I do take that time in the morning sometimes and it takes probably less time to go around that way than it does to go do school traveling.
Right.
Yeah, you're, you're experiencing something that every town that's hitting a gross for experience is Cabot, Conway. We have the same problems there. I live in Cabot and I don't care how many roads you have, you don't get around a school between eight and eight fifteen in the morning or you're gonna be just parking lots, everything else. So you're not the only person that's having that issue.
And I know, I think side of road is an excellent addition to our town. It's a beautiful, simple subdivision. And so you always wanna welcome a build like that. Um, so uh, conceptually, I think it's a good idea. It's the actual how it plays out for me.
Mr. Cook, you have anything?
Um, he said the roundabout at the intersection question mark uh could also put Apple Hill Road extension to Stonewall on future street plan. Those were Cook's comments.
Does he go?
Yeah.
He was texting me.
But yeah, so we got things, something about Conway and the traffic, but you know, Conway's like the city of roundabouts. A large, which is in that area would slow down the traffic coming from the west. You know, I'm talking about that west intersection.
Yeah, I think the biggest challenge there is whatever happens on Stonewall is going to be mutual between Washington County and the city, even if they annex that. And I don't know if I wanna be the one to approach the county better. Roundabout.
So if they annex, I mean, it would just be on the north side of Stonewall.
I mean, I agree, it's either going to have to be a little less dense development to meet fire code or figure out a different way to access that point, but uh that corner right there is on a steep slope and you can't see in either direction.
And we very well, they shorten that cul-de-sac and reduce the number of residences on that, so it would.
Another option, if the county would go, go for it, would be to put in a four way stop there. But I don't know, that would have to require petitioning the county.
You know, we also in the overall street plan didn't really add a lot of roads on that side of town. More on kind of eastern side, you know, industrial park works, but is there another road? You know, other than Bog Kid Lake Road or whatever that runs over there by an old pit stop? Is there a need for another north south corridor road on that side for future growth? I'm not, you know, it's not it, uh, right now, but for future growth, is that something that we may have not looked at?
Yeah, I, I think definitely Apple Hill Road, of course, connects, but it's not directly in line with anything. It would have to extend all the way over to Stonewall at some point, but Apple Hill Road might be a good connector, but it would mean a fairly extensive, you know, length of road. I can't remember, the highway department gave me a quote on how much it costs to build a mile of highway the other day and it was astronomical. Do you remember what they said, Chuck? To, to widen the, to widen the two lane bypass to four lane, they were talking seventy to eighty million dollars.
Four, four miles, four miles.
Four miles was gonna be seventy to eighty million dollars. So roads, roads aren't cheap. But I, I agree with you a hundred percent, Ryan. I think there needs to be another north south outlet over to the bypass.
Any other comments or motions?
Make a motion for a concept.
No, we're going to the motion for the proof of concept or maybe just a.
I think it's, yeah, I think, I think you need to go ahead and vote on it, whether or not you approve the concept or not, or are in favor of the concept or not. I mean, you're really not voting on anything that's binding because it's a concept plan. But it gives the developer an indication at least that you either support this project or you don't, which is the whole, you know, process.
Is this something that could be discussed at city council too?
Yes.
I just hate that you only have four of us, though, but I guess.
You, you can, you can table this tonight if you wanted to do that and get more input. And we could bring this back next month. I don't necessarily think Mr. Lemons would have to come back from Cabot to do that. It's, it's a, it's a concept plan, so.
I just hate, you don't have a full.
Full house.
House here. Um, and so it's hard, I mean, this might not be an accurate representation.
This is a big, this is a big development.
Yeah, for us to make a decision for you to move forward or not tonight, so.
I know when we reviewed Comfort Hill, I think we were several meetings.
Several, yeah. Cause again, I think nobody wants to say no. Yes, I mean, I know you don't blame, we all agree with what Blaine said, but we don't wanna be a hard no if there's a way you could do it.
Yep, storm moved in.
I just got deleted.
You know what he did a while ago?
Yeah.
I, no, it just quit. Uh, he checked them. I bet he checked the volume or the mic and it worked, but I, I think it just quit.
On until we're ready for western.
Okay.
My, my recommendation would be that we table the concept platform as a digital development on Stonewall Road by Lemons Engineering Consultants, uh, until the next one.
I said.
Have a motion and a second to place this concept plan on the table till next month. Any further discussion? Hearing and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Alright.
When is the next meeting you can invite?
Second.
My tenth, what I wanna say.
July, yeah, July. July, yeah, July. Yeah, that'd be right, July two.
Okay, is there anything I could ring with me next month that might help answer some more questions?
Tell you what, uh, she will bring, also serves on the city council, the light is on at the city council. She will probably bring this up at the meeting. Uh, Snyder's, if you want to be there.
Maybe it's.
It's coming Monday. I'm sorry.
Yeah, the phasing plan would be very, you know.
Yeah, the phasing plan would be a good idea.
Something tentative, you know, just.
But she will bring it up and there won't be any action taken at that meeting. It'll just be a discussion item, but.
I can assume that the front lots are over an acre, but let the.
That's true.
And so maybe talk about when the town areas were improvements for the rest of the higher density. And waterline improvements, you know, for a fire technical.
Sure.
Yeah, I've been trying to take that so that we can discuss that Monday.
Uh, what time's your council meeting Monday night?
Six o'clock. Six o'clock.
It's hard for someone who needs to.
Whatever.
Since this is the first time the council would have looked at this, I, if I can be here, I'd like to. I mean, I, we could do it virtually, but I don't mind.
And, and the council does have this information. They give every bit of information planning commission, so it's not like they haven't put eyes on it.
Okay.
It won't come as a surprise, but.
I, I'll, I'll talk to. I'll talk to Memphis and though, if I can be here, I'll be here. There's my contact.
Okay, thank you.
We appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
All right, out of five, large scale. You bet. Y'all have a good night. Large scale development plan for Western Holdings on Heritage Parkway.
Well, I think, I think we're kind of looking at a similar situation with, uh, Curse of the Swine. You've got the drainage report.
Ready to report the comments back to the engineer. Just wait for them to finalize it out. Yeah, not an issue.
Utilities and issues with utilities.
I have not seen anything for water and sewer infrastructure yet. I've just seen the layout.
The sewer is right behind the property and the water line is on the front of the property, so there's no extensions.
No, they're both available.
Well, J C, you've looked at the fire hydrant location. Parking, they're showing, and I think I sent you an email probably several months ago that we really don't have a standard for parking on food trucks is. Fourteen or fifteen? Fourteen are these handicapped here?
Yes.
You could get by this one handicap space if you wanted to add another, that would be up to you. You, you have to have one or twenty-five, so.
Handicap. I'll need to confirm that though. But yeah, the striped lines are.
So they're showing fourteen spaces.
Yeah, we did our best guess based off, like to your point, since there's no regulations, I kind of based it off of restaurant rules, like one spot for every hundred. Square foot of eating area. We've got. I remember is it, is it just shy of twelve hundred square feet for the eating area?
That's what I was looking to see.
At the beginning, this.
Four eleven.
And seating, right?
Yes. So I think the map came out to like ten point two eight parking spots.
That'll be the whole thing.
To lay out, to make it square.
You don't have a vendor. You're right. You don't have a vendor yet for the kitchen?
No, not yet.
You're still trying to solicit somebody?
Yes. We'd had one.
But it's the same concept. Same concept you talked about during the concept that you'll have somebody.
Yes.
That'll operate some kind of a small venue.
And then the right is restaurants. Is there direct walkability from Sundowner or did they have to get out like in front of Gabby's there?
There's continuous sidewalk, probably through Sundowner or all the way around our business.
Just not still, not from the east side of Sundowner to the west side by Taco Bell. Like there's nothing there, but otherwise you can get all the way to the neighborhood now.
Their sidewalk all the way from harvest.
Down.
To the first intersection building in Sundown. So in front of Gabby's, the legendary fitness, the lot that they are popular enough.
It's connected to the sidewalks.
Very similar to what you, you, when we approved the concept.
They've added this driveway. This is to access the truck area in effect.
Yeah. I think the last time you and I had talked, it was going to be behind.
Maybe coming across the area.
But then when we were talking about it, we're like, well, if we ever do expand the gym, there goes our access road. So we kind of restructured it to figure out how to make it totally independent of the other lot, just in case.
And if you ever separated, you sell one of the other.
Statute, yes. I didn't want to block ourselves, you know?
What is this green area here?
That's the dumpster.
Dumpster.
I'm not like a hundred percent settled on that location.
I had the same question. I didn't know.
Cause I'm wondering if that's a really tight turn for the trucks right there.
Jeff, we think I'll get trash trucks up for that or.
Uh.
May have to put a little turnaround right there.
I have to look at it really close because I didn't know what that green spot was.
Man, put a little spot there that they can pull in and back it up.
Yeah, we just had to have access with that big truck and so. Which that's usually early in selling like the market.
Yeah.
And it's completely movable, so yeah, no problem. Are you talking about widening the driveway after the highway? You can leave it alone.
Thinking if we can leave alone, we could make that entrance only and then just have them exit between legendary fitness and access medical.
Of course, one of the issues is it's our, our dot once that hit the hard out right away. Our dot's.
Yeah.
If you drive it wide, then our dot will have.
Is that a single width driveway? I mean, can, can two cars?
It's fifteen foot, so I don't think two cars could comfortably do it. But then when, when talking about widening it, I haven't talked to our dot. But I feel like they would. I'm wondering if the harvest and then that drive and the legendary fitness slash access drive will be really smushed together.
I know, I know legendary fitness, the clinic, they didn't wipe their.
Yeah.
Clinic did, our doctor had an issue with it.
Okay.
So I think it's a pretty easy process.
Okay.
They just want the drainage to be the same as the tiles. There's few specs they require or paper. I don't think they can do. I need to contact through the project engineer.
Okay, yeah. I'm planning not to widen it for now.
Right.
So let's talk about it like that, but then if we need to, but.
Well, I can see an issue. There's a car trying to pull out there and another car was trying to pull in. It could be an issue. You don't want a car stopped in the highway waiting.
Right, yeah. It's a pretty long drive though.
And while it's public. I assume some public has some comment?
Yeah, Bill will share it ten forty-nine center or, um, we had a great conversation.
Yes.
So we're, we're happy for them. They've been great neighbors to have the legendary business. Um, originally when this came out, I think CNN on social media, possibly, but uh. I, I never have seen this. I haven't seen this. This is the first time I've seen this, but so I do have concerns, concerns that fence is literally right there on mine. I think that's a fence, I guess.
In the back, yes.
And so. One of my concerns was, is one was first brought up was. Was there zoning ordinances where this or whatever? I don't know how to talk about it. Um, it was unclear. I, I tried to look on our website as far as city's website. I couldn't gain any traction there as far as understanding where to go to find that ordinance or whatever it was.
You mean ordinance for like.
That so I, I guess my big thing is, is as Brad O'Grill was, everyone knows Brad was. Uh, years ago, that was surrounded by nothing buildings. Now we're completely surrounded by tech and residential, so. As we, commercial properties can grow upon residential properties, what kind of protections do the residential people have?
Their landscape, it'll work, yeah.
Enforcement and vegetation requirements outside that screen. So just like at Taco Bell, they had to put up a fence and then they had to put landscaping and greenery on the outside of the fence, of course.
Now, is this on all personal properties? Does.
Access where they put their line?
This is on commercial properties that back up to a residential area, but access to medical. Um, there was no residents there when they built.
Yes, it was.
It was?
Yes. Gabby started at the same time we did.
Okay, I was going to say Gabby's was very long before her house was there.
I have a question for you, sir. Yes. So I'm, I'm just only asking because you're the homeowner. What is your biggest concern? Are you just worried about the, like, you're wanting separation from their business and your property?
Wind pollution, white pollution. We don't know what times these things are going to shut down. We don't know what kind of people are going to be there. I think originally when you talked, I, I'd heard there was a bar possibly in the future. What, at what point in later, you know, you said. For now, well, I, I thought I heard that. Is this going to change later? Do you know that? And is it going to have to come back to the planning commission? You know what it does? Concerned about my property office. So I should.
Yeah, you're fair.
Yeah.
That's fair. So. I, I guess I'm asking, you know, there will be a fence in there.
Yeah, yeah, the landscape ordinance, which is part of the development. regs that were adopted in two thousand twenty-four May. It requires there be some type of either vegetative or hard screening. And that is kind of up to us to determine if they, if they just choose a vegetative screening, we're going to ensure that it's some type of vegetative screening you can't see through. We're not going to let them go out and plant two or three sprig trees and say that's vegetative screening because it won't do anything for thirty years. So it's either going to have to be a full. You know, staggered pine trees that are, you know, tall enough that they make a fence, or it's going to have to be a hard fence. Hard fence is usually cheaper than vegetative screening. Plants aren't cheap.
Yeah, we're definitely going to do a part of that. Yeah.
Definitely, especially since, you know, access medical box is nothing, and then when they. Thank you.
I think that's because the development code changed last minute, like you said, so we're now under different.
Larry, I have a question, and I don't know if y'all know this, but because it is outdoors, what is their. Accountability and see what be their neighbor for the noise ordinance, the time, all that? How does that play against?
It's in a commercial zone, so it, but still, they're, they follow them to the same sound ordinance that everybody else has. We had, we dealt with this with Joe when he occurs.
That's right, yeah.
And really, you know, if it's after a certain hour and there's excessive noise, they can make a complaint. If police department determines that it's an issue, they can write a ticket.
Yeah, and we'd mention this to Billy on Saturday, but we're not laying on on doing light.
Not in low bands.
That can stay with the Grove and their wonderful station, so.
Lights cannot be aimed or directed at any residential property, and we've had that issue before. We've had commercial structures that we didn't think were a problem. Dollar General, Parkview, when Dollar General was built, we didn't think there'd be any issues because we thought they crossed the highway. People in Vining Grove started calling me and they said, my backyard's lit up. Two miles west, Charlotte West.
Yeah.
And. Dollar General's lights were such that just the direction that they were pointing, they were lighting a property a few miles west. So we made them readjust and put screens on them and they didn't have issues anymore. We'll look at that if it's an issue after the fact, even if we're dealing with Southern storage right now, right, five hundred sixty-two. Because his lights are causing some problems for neighbors and we're making input shrouds on them to direct the light down. So, uh, we won't give up on you day one. If there's still an issue, we'll make sure they take care of it.
Hmm. So that's one of the only things that's not on here is the lighting, because my guy doing it can figure out.
Why it's working.
Can I just come up there and like point? So current plan. Is to have lights from on the building on either side. And then on the back on either side. And out back, we were just going to do some poles with like string lights. Exactly.
It needs to be safe, it needs to be safe for patrons to not, you know, offend the neighbors, so.
Yes, yes.
And then the ones on the building would have like. The shades kind of like the access clinic does. I won't even use that as an example because I don't like the gyms outside lights very much. Some kind of like theirs, but.
Okay.
Pointed like with the shade. And I don't know if you know what they look like, but anyway, so four lights in the building total, two up front, two out back. And then string lights.
So the council is like, this can't be directed at any residential property or being pointed toward.
Yes, that's the plan.
What's, I mean, conceptively, what, what time will you all be shutting food trucks down? I mean, it sounds crazy.
It, it's definitely a concern. I think it's a hard question to answer since technically food truck is like their own business and I don't know.
I don't think they run usually past eight o'clock to be honest.
Most of them don't, maybe nine o'clock, like they'll have days open till nine sometimes on Friday and Saturday. Um. I can't imagine they would go past that.
And there won't. There won't.
But I don't know that I can say either.
There won't be generators or anything like that because everything will be a little wired.
Yes, all the little yellow dots out back are the utility poles. So roughly one for every two truck spaces that they can.
Each space will have its own water sewer and electric.
Yes.
And so will as the tenant and landlord, will you be able to go in there and tell them, hey, you know, don't give me playing music? Cause I'm not saying they do, but like first time Gabby's literally had music for the first time I think ever. And if you put screw loud, then I, I will listen privately. That was in perfect timing and as far as five thirty, about seven thirty. Not at all. But I was surprised how far that traveled.
It gets, it gets tough where you have commercial property bought up to residential property. I mean, even downtown, we're, you know, new food court is down there and they play live music. You know, they're butt dried up against residential properties and there were several of those residents that, that were concerned. You know, how late are you going to be playing music? Even on a live, we're having some complaints.
We like and music because we have that very party and it must wind up against the.
They anybody's a whole bill. But to your question, yes.
I think we can write that.
Like if they have, well, sometimes they have a little speaker on that side of the truck or whatever, right? We can tell them to turn it off at a certain point, certain time. We're pretty, pretty flexible.
Oh, I know that are. We, we talk.
Yeah.
Isn't it some of the same concern that the food court that was recently constructed? Kicked off a couple of weeks ago there.
I, I would say it's the same concern as we have with every commercial project, especially if it's close to a resident.
It's a fair concern, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
We just, we just want to have a good neighbor.
I'm saying. I'm worried about the trees on my backyard fence because it's button up this side of the road. Are we going to keep these trees? Are we going to lose these trees? I really like my shade yard.
I, I like the idea. It is right off the interstate. Your location is, I, I think, prime for something like that.
And all like almost at the entrance of your room, not quite, but almost.
Plus the, the front food.
Same, same.
And the reuse of an ugly building.
Yeah. Yes, it is.
The other cities have two very good, one for food court. Other venues for the citizens to get into, so I think if it did. I, I like it.
I sent this to Joe Ben too, but have y'all been to City Park in Fayetteville? City Park? No, I've been to the one by the lake and we've been to Four Walk and Springville. I would go down there too. It's right. It's kind of shoved in the middle of a lot of things, but it's a really cool. Is it over kind of like we'll send her or am I thinking? It's by the U M A. Kind of right below the U M A campus. Okay. You turn on lever. I've heard of it. Or it's on lever. But anyways, okay, it's a similar type concept that y'all should check out.
Okay.
Yeah, for ideas or whatever, but. I was gonna say, we've been doing lots of research.
Yeah.
Help, help. Need research.
So does that put your mind a little more ease that there are codes and rules and about the lights and sound and everything?
No, it does. And we got, like I said, we had a great conversation. We're happy for them. We just, you know, had some fun.
I think too, sir, I think they're, they're the type of people you could probably approach.
No, they are.
We, we propose to.
Yeah, I've got third dog.
I think it's always a good reminder though, for people to show up and express their concerns. Thank you. Yeah, so we sent you a file today. It's like, please come.
Totally do, yeah.
On the flip side of that, it is commercial property and it could be a McDonald's, you know, like, not that it's not a McDonald's, but it is, it does fit the zoning. And I feel like this is a pretty low key. Commercial development as far as noise and. Likes, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Anybody else?
I make emotionally approved large scale development plan for Western Holdings on Heritage.
Contend in a.
Yes, yeah. On Heritage Parkway, contend it on the drainage report.
Second. Have a motion in a second to approve large scale plan pending, uh, approval of the drainage. Or pardon, any plans? Tongue tied. Any further discussion? Hearing in all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right. Another checking your boss.
I'm doing. Make a motion.
Motion and second to his gun. Hearing. Hearing no objection, we are adjourned.